Okay.
8:31, this is the regular meeting of the town of New Canaan Board of Selectmen Tuesday, May 19th, 8:31 a.m. As Tom mentioned, we have to amend the agenda for a few items. One, we neglected to put the Waveney Park Conservancy on for their front of Waveney House project, which was approved last week by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And under the MOU, with the Conservancy must go through the Board of Selectmen and the Town Council tomorrow night. So in order to keep them on schedule, we'd like to add that as after the farmer's market. And then we are adding, we're revising number 5, 11 to 17. What was posted as the revisions, Tom?
The revisions were on the solar and on the striping of the roads.
Right, but you posted those on the revised agenda, right?
They're on the revised, it's a separate sheet.
Right. So maybe when we get to those, you can, you can put on the screen the revised agenda. But before I start, we, well, actually, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. So I asked you, do I have a motion to amend the agenda as I just discussed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Okay, so we're now going to the first minutes from last meeting. Any comments, corrections on the minutes from a prior meeting?
None here.
May 5th? I have none. All favor of approving the minutes is presented. That's unanimous. Okay, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and revote. Comments should be submitted to the following email address. BOsdistribution@newcanaanct.gov. I have one comment that was submitted yesterday. And we will keep the comment period open throughout the meeting. So if we do receive emails, I think this is the only email I've seen. Anybody, Nick or Kit, have you seen?
No, we just had one, Kevin.
So why don't we, I'll read this and comment on it later on in the meeting so we can get started with our farmer's market and Waveney Conservancy presentations. So I'd like the farmer's market and Waveney Conservancy both to limit your presentations to 10 minutes. We have a really full schedule this morning. And therefore, Patricia, are you up for the farmer's market? Is Lexi on also? If you could unmute.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Patricia.
We're both here. Hi, good morning, everybody.
Good morning. If you could, in 10 minutes, give us an update on the proposed walkthrough farmer's market.
How about if we do it in five? That way, if you have any questions, we've got a few minutes.
Okay, well, that's what I meant, including questions. You got 10 minutes.
All right, so we'll make it really quick. Can I share my screen? Everybody okay with that? I know you have the, not everybody has the presentation. Let me start talking. Tom, if you want, do you want to share the file that I sent? Or I can do it, but I can't share it.
Tom, could you authorize Patricia to share?
I can authorize it. Hold on, I was going to try to get that agenda item. I'm on my computer and I gotta go to the town computer and I'm trying to do the.
Okay, so let me just start talking then. What we're proposing is a walkthrough model. We want to start May 30th, not this Saturday. It's been going quite well doing the drive-through model. And for those of you that don't have the presentation, basically, the number of cars and the number of orders both increased by about, number of cars by almost 50% in number of orders, not revenue, but orders about 20% from week to week. So that went really well. We think we need another week of the drive-through model in order to get ourselves organized for the, both the residents in town as well as for the vendors. So with that, what we're proposing, I'm gonna go actually, for those of you who have the presentation, if you would look at page eight, because that has the map.
You can share if you'd like, it's open.
Thank you. Let me do that. Now, it says I can't share. So what we're proposing is that we do kind of a, sort of a hybrid model for the opening of doing a walkthrough model. And what we would do is basically set up the vendors, the way that they have been set up around the periphery of the lot. We would have people enter through the lot the way that they do today through, per walking in. Given that we want to maintain social distance, I'm proposing, or we are proposing that the only cars that we let park in the lot are for either handicapped or senior citizens who can't walk farther and potentially the volunteers to get the volunteer cars off the street. When you come into the lot, people would go and wait online, queue up. We would have a single entrance and a single exit to the lot for pedestrians so that it's not just a free-for-all, that people have to kind of come and check in. And that way, we can make sure everybody's wearing a mask, we can make sure people know the rules of the road as they go into the market, and we can stagger entrance for pedestrians if we need to, so to make sure it doesn't get too crowded. So we have a table at the market entrance, which would basically be near where the first, first vendor is set up. That's a parking slot number 23. For the first week, maybe the first few weeks, what we're also thinking is that we would request that anyone who comes to the market for the first two hours, register. That's to limit the number of people in what's usually a very busy time in the first couple hours. After the first couple hours, it would be open. So that's how we're thinking to monitor the pedestrians coming in. In terms of the vendors, the vendors would maintain the social distancing or the distance between their individual tents, the way that we have it set up today for the drive-through model. And as we potentially add vendors, they would go around the, again, the periphery towards, towards where CNH Auto is set up, so that we could maintain distance. We would not have any vendors around the grass island in the center of the market like we have had in past. That's just to allow for either lines, for people to wait in line as they go to the market, or allow people to walk without getting too close. The vendors will still have the ability to pre-order. That seemed to work out very well, although I will say that it adds a full day of extra work to the vendors, especially for the farmers or those that have a large inventory of products. It's just a lot of work to manage and prepackage everything. On the flip side, it's actually worked pretty well because people seem to have been buying more. They're going through the trouble of getting to the market and pre-registering, they're looking to see what other vendors are there and what they have. So that's actually worked pretty well. The vendors are happy about that, but not the extra work. So we think this hybrid of being able to pre-purchase if they want to, plus being able to purchase on-site is good. For purchasing on-site, consistent with what all the other markets in the area, including Greenwich and New Milford, I think we talked about last time, they are doing the same kind of model. People do not touch any food. They point, they get online, they look at what's available, they can point. The vendor actually prepackages everything and manages payment, which could either be, hopefully will be electronic through a credit card or Venmo or PayPal, something like that. We are thinking, because we want to anticipate what could potentially be an issue or problem, one of the things that we'd like to do is hire a second off-duty police officer to be inside the market. We always have someone outside the market to manage foot traffic and, or, you know, protect the foot traffic coming into the market, stopping auto traffic. But we'd like to have somebody else inside the market, just to reinforce the importance of the social distancing. So if you could go to, I think, page eight, Tom?
All right. No one?
Yes, thank you, perfect. Yeah, so this helps better to visualize the layout of the market. And the other thing we're going to do this week is make up a card that we can hand to everybody who attends the market that says, here are the rules for coming to the walkthrough market next week. So they've got it in hand. We'll do all the, you know, post it on social media. Thanks, Robyn's helpful with that. And we'll ask Mike Handler if he would talk about the market when we go to an open model as well, so that, or the walkthrough model, so that we can, you know, reinforce it. Having him do that last time, talk about the market was really helpful. Okay, that's all I needed to say, I think.
Okay, Kit or Nick, questions? I'm sorry, am I unmuted?
No.
No, Nick is muted, though.
Nick is unmuted himself. I think this is terrific. It's a natural progression from the drive-through, which has been really successful, having seen it firsthand. I mean, I have no criticisms, complaints whatsoever. I think, you know, this is directed at maintaining the safest environment you can have. I think we all are coming to the realization you're better off outside than inside. So I think outdoor shopping, just like outdoor dining, is, you know, safer in the end of the day. And you guys have done a fantastic job. Well, first, putting together the drive-through plan, and again, the natural progression to essentially morphing the drive-in plan to a walkthrough plan. So it's a great job.
Thank you.
And a question, I don't know, am I actually talking at this point? Can you hear me? Okay, great. I know we're gonna have a second police officer. I'm wondering, is there gonna be actual enforcement about wearing masks?
I'm really glad you raised that question. I, I think we need, I'm looking for the town to support this, but Lexi and I and Dawn, we feel strongly that we need to enforce that. And I think we've seen enough people in their cars just concerned about safety, which we are as well. And we just want to make sure that everybody who comes to the market feels safe.
That's a good question. Patricia, how many of the, of the drive-through model, and I think you've had two, two weeks of that, right? How many people in the cars were not wearing masks?
Of the, I noticed, I saw four people, maybe four people. They kept their windows up, but, you know, maybe an inch down so they could talk to us when they checked in, but that was about it, everybody. And in some cars, people did bring their kids, a few cars, they actually had their dogs, but, you know, they're in the car, so I wasn't gonna turn people away for that. But I, you know, as we, people came through, we told them they can't bring children, certainly they should know not to bring pets. But there were about four or five people that I noticed. I don't know, Lexi, Dawn, maybe you have a different number, but not, most people had masks.
May I presume that the vendors as well will be wearing masks and gloves?
Absolutely. They have been, but they will continue to, absolutely.
And I know this has been a tremendous amount of work, and I think it's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would just reiterate, you know, farmer's market is part of downtown, and we have a mask required when you're downtown policy for starting tomorrow. And we also, Lexi can, you know, we've got lots and lots of the surgical masks. If initially you want to make sure you can hand them out to people that don't have them, that would be a good thing to do.
Okay, we can get them from Jen, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. That's a great, a great suggestion, a good compromise. But, and I know some people are very uncomfortable wearing masks, I'm sensitive to that, but I think if they're that uncomfortable, they shouldn't be at the market, or they should get a personal shopper, or a volunteer shopper, I should say. And the town's certainly making those available. And those of us that are volunteers, if somebody shows up, they don't want to wear a mask, I'm sure one of the volunteers would be happy to go through the market and get things for them.
Nice, so that's a good point to reiterate also. The Human Services Department is giving out vouchers for, for those who qualify. And if, for the seniors who are getting vouchers, they really should have someone shop for them. We have plenty of volunteers who are helping seniors shop in the supermarkets, and this is really the same thing. So anybody who needs a volunteer can call Human Services and, or call anybody in town government, will put you in touch with the Human Services to get a volunteer to shop for you.
Look, nobody likes wearing a mask. I mean, they're hot, uncomfortable, but that's a small price that you have to pay in order to open up our downtown. I mean, I'd much rather, you know, wear a mask and be able to eat outdoors downtown to go to the farmer's market, to shop at our businesses. It's a small price to pay.
So, you know, this honestly was one of our concerns, so that if someone does come and they're insistent on going into the market but not wearing a mask, I mean, we obviously will be respectful, but I think it's important to be able to be assertive that they must wear a mask. And if they have any concerns about that, they can reach out to the Board of Selectmen or to the Department of Health. But I think that's where, you know, we need to draw the line for the safety of everybody at the market.
Yeah, Patricia.
Any more questions? We, we have to stay to our schedule here.
That's all we, so are we good?
I move we approve the plan as presented by Lexi and Patricia. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Now you're approved, Patricia. Lexi, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. And I assume you kind of lay this out in phases. Do we need to come back to you if, only if something significant changes?
Well, I'll go back to Jen. The Health Department really is in charge of these, especially the grocery store, the vendors of food.
Okay, thank you all very much.
One question, one question. What is the definition of a child? You said no children.
Good question.
So what we were, what we're ideally going for is one member per family, right? Like, the same as they would in a grocery store? You're, you're asking for people to shop alone whenever possible?
I might express that that way, rather than say no children, because it's hard to know what.
Right, right. What's the cutoff?
What is someone that's 12?
Right.
We could say no strollers.
That's one problem we have now, is a vendor who typically brings his son, who is 12. And so we were, I'm not sure what the answer is for that, because I don't want him getting harassed that his 12-year-old is at the farmer's market and there's no children allowed. So we may lose that vendor partially because of that reason.
I think if you had that rule, one shopper per family, then he's not a shopper, he's a worker.
Yeah, that's fine, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to.
Thank you.
Waveney Conservancy. We have Caroline Garrity, the chairman of the Waveney Park Conservancy Board, and Jane Gamber is gonna make the presentation for us. And Jane, can, can you put it up on the screen?
I think Tom is going to do that for us. But while he's doing that, I'll just give a little intro. I'm Jane Gamber, I am a member of the Waveney Conservancy Board, and we're excited to present to you the next project that we are hoping to undertake, which is the renovation of the front gardens at Waveney. I'm, I'll start by reviewing just really quickly the investments that the, that the Conservancy has made in Waveney at this, to date. It's a little over a million dollars. The key restorations that have been undertaken, either completed or are underway, are the Anderson Pond, which was a $350,000 investment from the Andersons in conjunction with a lot of work through Tiger and John in the, with the town. The Jenny and Meadow is a $375,000 investment. The Parter Garden, which was the Conservancy, the garden club, and the town together, was another one. Trail restoration, the summer internship program, and this is the next of the phases that we're hoping to undertake. Is Tom is looking to put that up there. I know you're all familiar with existing conditions of overgrown plantings, broken walkways, there are sandbags around window wells because there was a lot of water issue based on the pitch of the gardens. So there are a number of hardscape issues that need to be addressed, as well as all of the plantings. So we're pleased to have hired Jennifer Anderson of JADD Design for the design of this, and with all the, if all the approvals go well, to do the installation as well. It's a two-phase program that we're looking at, and Tom might be able to find, there we go. So you can review this later with the, the first two pages and then the existing conditions. When we get to the first of the drawings, it will show the foundation plantings, if you will, along the front of Waveney. So we're still looking at existing conditions now. And then we can scroll down further for the, yep, so those are broken slates on the walkways, and we'll see the sandbags on the window wells in a moment. On the left, the ramp that we see on the right, I understand, is being redesigned and rebuilt by the town for ADA compliance. That part of the design, we're not doing anything, we're not addressing until after the, those issues have been resolved with the reramping and the ADA compliance. The next page will show, it's sideways, it shows the foundation garden. So you'll see that the, that the driveway goes around, the house is to the right, the port cochere is down at the bottom of your screen, and there are just a number of varied plantings, many natives, as many natives as possible. All of the plantings that are being designated do well with the conditions, the light conditions, water conditions that are prevalent in that particular location. As we go to the next slide, we'll see that courtyard, an alley of trees has been designed on the outer sides of the driveway, and it will be, continue to be grass on the interior portions of it. And I think that that is pretty much, the third slide that we'll see, is what we would undertake as a second tranche on this. And that is outside the stone walls, where you just begin to enter the driveway, is a proposal of a hedge with, very much like an English country house, a hedge of ilex with boxwood accentuating the piers. A very quick overview of this, the timing would be that we would begin with hardscape, tree removal, and the, the other portions of this to get the structure for us, and then do the planting either later in the summer or early in the fall. That's a very quick overview. The budget for this is $125,000. It is to be fully funded by the Waveney Park Conservancy. That includes all of the plant material, it includes all the hardscape, irrigation, and lighting, which would be for the, both to, for safety and for enhancing the house in the evening for events. It's been endorsed by both the Conservancy and was unanimously approved by Park and Rec last week, so I guess we should open it up for questions.
Thank you, Jane. Kit, Nick?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm unmuted or not. Oh, okay, so the, this is just interested, in the alley of trees, will there be uniformity of species, or?
Yes.
Yes, so it'll be like one, one form of tree that creates the alley?
Yes.
Great, looks great.
Yeah, this is terrific. I guess my only, my question is, historically, how does this work into, you know, you know, the history of Waveney House? And I assume it's, all of this is based on former plans, or is this a whole new de novo?
It's kind of a hybrid. As you, as I'm sure you know, when the Lappums lived here, they had 21 uniform gardeners to take care of the house at all times, the gardens alone. So what we tasked the designer with was to do as much as she could to marry some of the original Olmsted design with the need for maintaining a public park. And the Conservancy, in the same, the same commitment that we have with the Parter Garden, the Conservancy will do the maintenance for three years, and then to get all the structure in place. And then after that, the town will take it over. And the, the key thing, we have to make sure that this is able to be maintained beautifully without undue effort by the town.
Did you say 21 uniform gardeners?
That's what they used to have, in white. They all wore white, yes.
John Howe would be, John Howe would be jealous.
Model now.
Yeah, we'll schedule, no hurry, no hurry, am I in?
I would note a couple things. Nick, do you have any further questions?
No, this is a great plan, and thanks again to the Conservancy for their generosity and, and making our town and our crown jewel, Waveney Park, a better place.
I would note a couple things. I watched the Parks and Rec meeting afterwards, and Steve Banko noted there's a couple trees that were planted in the front yard dedicated to someone's memory. Where does that stand, Jane and Caroline?
So Jennifer said that she was absolutely taking that under advisement. I think there's another one that was a dogwood tree on the west side that will also need to be considered as, as the design is amended, because those are memorial trees that really need to be, need to stay in the design in one way or another.
Although I would, I would, I don't know how mature these trees are, and whether or not perhaps we could, you know, when you're looking to redesign something that's in keeping with the character and history of the house, you know, we may have to reevaluate, and perhaps we could move trees or plant a replacement tree if it doesn't fit with the design. So.
And we'll bring that back to the designer.
And otherwise, I'll leave my, you know, the Parks and Rec approve this, Town Council tomorrow night can have their shot at it to make sure that anybody doesn't have any concerns about the plan or the, the respect for the history. So I have no further questions. I also would like to thank the Conservancy, Caroline, for all your hard work. And Jane, I, I love all the work that the Conservancy has done, and I think, you know, this continues the plan to restore the grounds as the town will continue to restore the hardscape. And so with that, again, I thank you, and I would move, we approve the plan as presented by Jane. Second, discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thanks again, Caroline. Jane, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
That returns us to item four. Why don't I do this? Again, if anyone wants to send a comment from the public, you can email to BOs, which stands for Board of Selectmen, BOsdistribution, spelled out all in one word, at newcanaanct.gov. And I'll take this opportunity to read one comment that we received yesterday. This was from Jamie Grzowski. She said, "I was wondering where the new infections are coming from? In other words, where are people still catching the virus? It seems New Canaan has been immaculate for weeks, months, and most people have stayed at home, so it is hard to understand where new infections are contracted." My comment on this would be that, you know, it is true that New Canaan has comparatively, when you look at the statistics that the state keeps, very low incidence of infections. We have about 160 reported, recorded positive cases. Obviously, the number of recorded cases depends upon how much testing you've been doing. But, so of the 210 total recorded cases that Mike reports about, we have 29 who have passed away, primarily from senior facilities, and, and all of them, virtually all of them, over 85 years old. And another 30 that are staff members at either Waveney Care Center or Silver Hill Hospital. So the residence is actually quite remarkably low, at about 160. So the residence is actually quite remarkably low, at about 160, 270. Yesterday morning, when I saw, I see the daily list of new, we've had very few new cases in the past couple, few weeks. When I saw the name of a 75-year-old yesterday, who I know, I scratched my head because I know they are staying home. And then when Jen Allison calls every recorded case and talks to them as to where they've been, and in this case, they were out of town. So it's true that cases are coming from out of town, not from local community transmission for the most part. We suspected perhaps housekeepers or aides, you know, which was the case with a few of the seniors who got very sick because they had aides coming into their house of one type or another. And we've encouraged people not to have clean people come into seniors' homes. And so if, if anybody has any further comments about that, ask you, Jen is on. I didn't realize Jen is on. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning.
You want to comment further? I mean, I, again, I, I'm not proud of, but I'm, I'm very comforted by the fact that New Canaanites have been able to stay at home, especially the seniors, and protect the community. So the cases we have seen, primarily, we've been able to trace from people who have traveled, the very early ones and the subsequent ones. You have any further comment, Jen?
There are still, you know, the few cases where they've only gone places like the grocery store. So that was prior to everyone wearing masks. So again, I think it's important that people follow the guidance. And per the governor's orders, starting tomorrow, you must follow those sector rules. And it also helps with the transmission. If everybody's masked, it greatly reduces the transmission rate. So, no, I agree, you know, with the house cleaners and the home health aides and stuff like that, you have to be safe. So, and, and once we begin to reopen things, people can't get complacent. You can't have a giant block party downtown, which is exactly what we're not doing. We're doing this safely for a reason. So we just want people to remember to do that. And over the summer, don't have huge house parties and stuff like that. And we can continue to reopen things slowly and safely, so.
And also, as, as we'll note further, the, we're going to be delayed until Friday to get the barriers up downtown, so the restaurants probably will not be open until Friday.
Look, I think, I think the headline here, excuse me, the headline here is that the town, the people of the town of New Canaan have done a hell of a good job, social distancing, wearing masks, you know, following the rules. We just had an example, I think Patricia said, of the 500 or 600 cars who went through the farmers market last week, only four people weren't, weren't wearing masks. I mean, that's an example of, of a town coming together and generally following the rules. Now, I agree with Jen, as we open up downtown, you know, we, we still need to be very vigilant as citizens. But I think the folks of New Canaan have been, have come through this in, in really solid form.
Yeah, another thing is we, as we've told people, we tested all the town employees yesterday and all the first responders and their families last Friday. So once we get the results of these tests and then we're going to begin a program starting next Tuesday for community testing, we'll have a much better handle on the overall incidents and also the, with the blood test, an indication of how many people may have actually been, had it and didn't realize it back in February, March. So it'll be interesting when we start seeing those results.
Kevin, when it, when, when the process opens up to the town as a whole, will everyone be able to be tested?
Yes, everyone except under 10 years old.
Correct.
And the, the insurance pays for your testing.
Correct.
So we're going to have some process where you can sign up online and show up at the location, which we'll disclose later, at, at your appointed time. It may take a few weeks to get everyone who wants to get tested, tested. But quite honestly, the more we test, the more we're going to show that, well, let's wait for the results, but I think. Our instance, our. Well, no, seriously, we, we, when, when you isolate, self-isolate, as people have been doing, especially the seniors, you remarkably keep down the, the trouble is people letting down their guard and beginning to travel to other areas. That's when we're going to have problems, when people think it's safe to do things. And again, the governor's order is still, even tomorrow, tomorrow with phase one, no gatherings of more than five. I guess the assumption is, or the expectation is he may increase that to more than 10, no more than 10 on June 20th, but that's why plans are, there can be no large gatherings. So, anyway, if, if anybody else has comments, please email them. Let's get back to the agenda. We have, go to item four, which is the printer copy machines. Tiger, who's actually doing the?
That's Chris.
Chris, Chris Kaiser, IT.
Good morning. We'll make it quick and sweet. We're looking to redo our contract with all 20 copiers for all departments. The vendor that we use is currently on state contract. They are changing their lending company. We do a four-year lease and they know that every year that it has to go through the budget. It's stipulated in the contract, the verbiage. And it's, it's, as it's always been, we're happy with the service, we're happy with the performance of the machines. And it's actually going to be somewhere around a $1,200 annual savings. So we're saving money this year, this time with this contract as well.
Okay, questions for Chris?
You go ahead, Nick.
No, go ahead, Chris, I mean, Kit.
All right. The, in terms of the maintenance agreement, I just didn't understand how that functions at per copy rates.
No, the maintenance is free, we get charged per copy. So whether it be, right, so whether it be, and that's the wear and tear on the machine, so we end up paying for the, the copies themselves, they come in and any break fix, they, they provide at no cost.
Thank you.
This one's pretty cut and dry, sorry.
Nick, your question?
None.
I move or approve the request from the Information Technology Department to enter into a following four-year lease upgrade with Prism Office Solutions for 20 copy printer machines, as described on the agenda there. Do I have a second? Okay, Kit, second. All, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Going to solar consulting, this is one of the items that was revised for the agenda. And therefore, Tiger, could you?
Good morning. Yeah, as Kevin mentioned, this was, this was revised when, when the consultant first came forward with his proposal. It was for $7,500 total. The draft that we received, the final draft we received last night, he actually added $500 for reimbursable expenses to make the total, or up to $500 for reimbursable expenses to make the total $8,000. So I apologize for the late entry. This is with MHR Development. They've done first phase of solar installations on the, on the four-town roofs that we had. The project went very well, everything's functioning well, and we're seeing savings as we go forward. This would be phase two for basically the exact same type of work, preparation of an RFP, ZREC procurement and our net metering application. And then project management of the, of the work as it's installed. This would be for three buildings, the wastewater treatment facility, control building, SAC school cafeteria roof, and roof at West School, all which are ready to go. The control building at the wastewater plant, we feel, it's at 20 years, we're having it reevaluated to see how much life it has left in it, but that might have to be replaced before we start this portion of that, that project. It's also working to combine this RFP with other facilities in town, not managed by the town, but others being the Waveney Inn and the New Canaan YMCA, so we can get, seem to get a little bit better bang for our buck moving forward, trying to group everything together. So the proposals for $17,500, basically $2,500 per building with $500 for reimbursable expenses for a total of $8,000.
So Tiger, this is phase two. How many phases do we, do we envision?
As roofs become available, we'll continue to, to place them on it. We're, we're looking at other ones that we have as well, the top of the highway garage where our salt is stored, the pre-treatment building in the wastewater plant, other facilities as they come forward, the high school roofs would be another area to expand on. So they'll be, they'll be, as roofs become available, we'll continue to move this forward. He's trying to develop one specific kind of RFP that then we could then utilize throughout the rest of the phases.
I don't recall, you know, under the new, the proposed new library plans, did they incorporate solar? I don't recall.
They had it in their, in their drawing.
They did, yeah. Good.
Any questions, Kit?
I have none.
I would emphasize that this is, you know, we're going to, going forward, we're going to do PPAs. We approved the PPA for East School, the roof that's being done at East School this summer. Although, again, we're essentially looking for a financial partner because solar is a commodity. The panels are primarily made overseas or in Canada. And with the slowness in the economy, a lot of people are pulling back and doing projects, so we think advantageous to go out. And as Tiger mentioned, Mark Robbins has been working with both Waveney Care Center and the YMCA. If they want to tag along with the pricing, we're able to get on a, on a larger order. We're essentially looking for a financial partner who's willing to take the investment tax credit before it expires at the end of the year and commit to do projects more economically than we could do as separate projects. So I'm in favor of this project and I would move we approve the request from Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with MHR Development for a total of $8,000 for project development and project management services for the three town buildings and... Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just one question, what is the likelihood we'll be able to find that partner?
Well, it's a very competitive market. It's, you know, the, the Board of Ed used Davis Hill and, and Joey and Katie negotiated for East School, I think four and a half cents. We got four cents a kilowatt hour for South School, which is terrific pricing. And hopefully Davis Hill will bid as well as others and, and we'll, again, we're, we will essentially use the same contractor for the other roofs. It's, so we're really picking a financial partner who wants to have a sharp pencil to give us the best pricing, given the, the cost of panels, which if we buy, also if we, if we bundle projects together and buy panels in bulk, we will save money. So it just makes sense for us to try to maximize our position for the town, the schools, and if we can, Waveney Care Center, which has a brand-new roof on the New Canaan Inn on Owen Oak Ridge and also, and the YMCA, which has brand-new roofs as part of the renovation. So signing a PPA is kind of a no-brainer because you're going from like 16 cents a kilowatt hour to four or five cents a kilowatt hour, and it's just automatic savings at the stroke of a pen, so. So I, this is our discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Kit, thank you. Going to traffic safety barriers. I, in order to move along the project to accommodate outdoor dining, I approved this agreement on an emergency basis last Friday. Hopefully they'll be delivered by Thursday, so we can get the restaurants up and running by Friday. These are the white plastic water-filled barriers that you may see downtown on Locust and Forest at the 42 Forest Project. And we're buying 70 of them, which we can use in the future, but, so $16,600. Tiger, do you have any, any further explanation?
No, you did a great job. We, we contacted the manufacturer, if they're coming from the, directly from the manufacturer, we contacted them yesterday looking for a specific date, we're hoping for Wednesday and have everything up by Friday.
How is this being accounted for in the budget?
We have monies available in our current highway maintenance budget.
And these are the, these are the kind of expenses that possibly could be COVID-related. There's two sources of federal funds for, for COVID-related expenses, both FEMA and also the COVID something fund.
That, that was my next question, Kevin, whether we could get reimbursement for this?
We're going to try, we're going to keep track of it as such, but we have monies available if not.
Good.
Kit, question?
Yeah, just one, what actually happens to these water-filled barriers if a car hits them?
They don't move.
They don't.
They're designed very similarly to a concrete barrier curb. So if you hit it hard enough, can you break it? Yeah, I've seen concrete barriers break, but at the speeds that they're traveling on Elm Street and the other areas where we're placing them, we shouldn't see it. Plus it'll be, instead of a straight-on shot, it's more of a glancing blow. It's really just a reminder that, you know, to protect pedestrians.
And we will hopefully have someone like the Beautification League or the Garden Club want to put planters on top of these and make them prettier than they already are.
Right, we've reached out to the Beautification League, we've reached out to a couple of other areas, some landscapers to see if they can help us beautify the area. And then if someone wanted to buy the plant, they could buy the plant.
Hey Kevin, I think Tucker had her hand up.
I did, I just wanted to add, I'm sure you all know this, but just for the record, we have Jen and Jen from Health and Lynn from Planning and Zoning. Myself had a Zoom call last week with all of the restaurants to let them know what the plan was, went very well. Jen went through all of the health protocols and what was going to be expected. Lynn went through any zoning issues. I went through some of the practical issues. There's been some questions, but everybody's really appreciative of the effort that has gone into this from the town's point of view and appreciates it. We know there'll be some bumps along the way, but I think communication is key and they feel that we are all working on their behalf and hopefully we'll get them, get the supplies here and up and get people eating outside safely over the next few days.
Hey Tucker, how many tables in total do you expect there to be?
It's hard to tell because what happened yesterday was the application went live. Lynn attended a, Lynn from, Lynn Brooks Avney, attended a seminar, a virtual seminar on Friday, and there was some new language that needed to be inserted into the sidewalk sale, a sidewalk cafe permit. I know. And so she had to modify that over the weekend and get that updated. So the application went live yesterday and what part of the application process is, is they have to draw out the restaurant, each restaurant has to draw out and sketch out what their planning is, sort of measure out the, the spot. My goal, and I, I don't know the number, but to answer your question visually, is I, I'm assuming that everybody's going to, hoping to put out the same amount of tables that they had before, just in double the space, if you will, because they only went out to a portion of the sidewalk. We didn't build anything here to theoretically let anybody expand. And I heard a, a nice thing that came of this just last night was the landlord of that little pocket park down on Forest Street. She is the same landlord that is for Gates, Tequila, Farmer's Table and the diner, and they've all expressed some interest in possibly using that space. So Lynn is working with them to see if that's possible, if that could be a space to accommodate a few more tables.
Great.
So I don't have an exact number for you. Once everybody's up and running, I think that'll be an interesting number, Nick, that we might want to gather and see how everybody landed. But right now, we just said we want everyone to be able to at least have the tables that they had before, but just with twice as much amount of space.
And obviously, restaurant by restaurant, it's going to vary because.
Some restaurants are going to benefit from, if you look over at Upper Crust, UCBC over there by where Mackenzie's used to be, Mackenzie's and the spot next to Mackenzie's are both vacant and that's undercover, it's got a little portico. So I said to him, you know, why don't you just kind of spread it out down the line, you know? So he's going to have a little of an advantage there because he happens to have some empty storefront that he can, undercover, which is kind of nice.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I move we approve a purchase of traffic safety barriers from Traffic Safety Service at a cost of $16,600. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion for the kit?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, number seven, Waveney Wall Repair?
Yes, this was actually noticed by Steve Banko of a weekend. This happened pretty much after one storm. So you'll uh in the memo, you'd actually see the picture of uh one of the columns that was uh had lost a substantial amount of material, brick material, and then a couple of the coping stones had fallen off of one of the walls. This is the wall at Wavinga leading to the gazebo along the gazebo walk. So we went out and got a price from Midori Masonry. He's the one who did the wall for the Parterre Garden. Did a very, very nice job on those walls uh last year. Gave us a price to uh repair, actually take down the entire column. We've already taken it down because of safety reasons, but basically rebuild the entire column. Straighten up the wall in certain locations, replace the coping stones, excuse me, and then re-point uh a majority of the wall since we're getting water infiltration in to the joints and that's causing us uh the problems that we see. Uh his price was six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We added a contingency of a thousand dollars for project total of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the funds are currently available on the wall of Wavinga Wall Repair um budget line.
Leave it to Steve, leave it to Steve to to notice this. What caused this?
Kit, any questions?
I have none.
I move we approve this request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Midori Masonry for a total of seven seventy-fifth, seventy seven hundred and fifty dollars, which includes a contingency of a thousand for the construction of portions of the existing stone wall and pillar along the walkway to the gazebo at Wavinga House. Second?
Second.
Kit, second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay, unanimous. Lawnmower?
This is a a purchase of a forty-eight inch or four foot wide deck mower uh for the Highway Department from Schmitz and Seraphine's True Value. It's under state contract, uh so the price is five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and the funds are currently available.
Pretty straightforward. I move we approve the request from the Department of Public Works to buy this lawnmower under state contract for five thousand five nineteen. Uh second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. The next one will be handled by Jim.
Jim Rogers, good morning, Jim.
Uh good morning. It's for sodium hydroxide. Uh we received six bids on this. Uh Univar was the lowest bid. Uh we've used the vendor before. There's money in the budget and we're protecting the savings of a hundred dollars.
Terrific. Any questions for Jim?
None here.
None here.
I move approve requests from the Department of Public Works to enter into a one-year agreement with Univar Solutions for a total of eighteen thousand three ninety-two for um Univar Solu- Solutions. No, no, that's liquid liquid sodium hydroxide. Uh do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Jim. Uh Mead Park Lancer. Actually, Tiger, I why don't you explain this? I actually, I think I'd like to remove this item from the agenda and and we can talk about it at a future meeting.
Which one?
Number eleven, number ten.
You want it? I I had Maria to talk about it. We can talk about it or you can chel it, whatever.
Well, well, again, I I didn't catch this until late this weekend that that I didn't know enough about it. I guess the idea is here that we'd like to have be able to better have a master plan for the parks. But this is kind of a discretionary kind of thing in this kind of environment and I'd like to uh one understand it further before we bring it to a vote and uh so uh maybe we'll bring it back in two weeks, but I I given the length of our agenda. Why don't we table table this item uh for now?
Okay.
I move Nick and Kit, I I move we table this to so we but we all can learn more about it before we proceed with this.
Second here.
Okay. That's tabled. Um line striping removal and installation. This is a revised item as uh Tom has put up on the screen posted on the revised agenda.
That's correct. The uh we had received a quote from the contractor and then in reviewing it, we noticed that he had missed one subset of roads, uh our crack seal roads to be restriped. Um so we went back to him and he was able to give us a revised quote as of yesterday. So this is in essence for our microthin overlay and cape seal projects. We need to remove the existing striping and then restripe. And then after we crack seal, after the five-year uh timeframe, we restripe the road again since the crack sealing tends to take off some of the joint in the centerline. Uh so it's kind of a joint project for all of the uh maintenance activities we have going on right now. Um the crack sealing at present, we'll be looking to remove the lines that need to be removed and then microthin overlay should happen hopefully right after Memorial Day and cape sealing will happen as well. Uh it's probably about two weeks of work to be done. So this came from Safety Marketing. Safety Marketing is on the state procurement contract for the work. Uh we were looking for twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents for removal, line striping, and then reinstallation, forty-seven thousand six oh eight fifty-four. For a total of seventy-one thousand seven twenty-five oh four. We added a contingency of ten thousand seven fifty for a total of eighty-two thousand four seventy-five oh four. The monies are currently available in our in our paving budgets.
Any questions on this item?
None here.
None here.
Okay, I move we approve this uh request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Safety Markings as Tiger just described it and is reflected in the revised agenda. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Tom? Twelve, item twelve. Okay, so um you have
One to add? I'm sorry.
Seventeen will be, we'll come back to that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, do you uh
That's fine, it's perfect.
Um okay. On your tablets, um and we ordinarily don't do this, but um we're gonna just quickly review this today and then we'll vote on it in two weeks. Or two weeks after that if we need to. Um we put it out for comment to the Audit Committee. The year before last, the Audit Committee raised some comments about uh us having a more formal purchasing policy. Historically, we've had guidelines in finance, which quite honestly, for the first year I was here, I didn't know there were guidelines in finance, so um most other towns have either ordinances or or selectmen policies. So what Linda has done here over the past several months is combined his his uh Finance Department guidelines with other procedural aspects of our purchasing and procurement policies um to put it into one document. This was reviewed by the Advisory Committee on Buildings Infrastructure at their meeting two weeks ago. And got we got comments from various members there. Um so um if you want to talk about it now, given the length of our agenda today, we could defer and just discuss it in two weeks. It's not urgent that we approve it in two weeks, but however much time you want to have to discuss it.
I I know, I'll I'll be interested in how does this differ from what we're doing now?
Yeah, why don't we why don't we why don't we defer to discussion of the, just because of where we are with this agenda today? Why don't we defer the discussion on this for two weeks, but you have you have it in your hands now to to uh carefully review it for two weeks? It has gone through comments and uh
Are you expecting to get Audit Committee comments within the next two weeks?
Well, yeah, because we uh Yes.
So why don't we, why don't we, I think we should defer until we should be the last stop for approving this.
Yeah, but if you have any, for that matter, why don't you review it and then talk to Tiger and Linda who have been the the primary architects of this? It's a moving, it's been a moving document and um why don't you talk to them directly about any questions you have, so then we can do a further discussion in public uh in two weeks or two weeks after that, whenever however long it takes to to get through this, but it it's a it's really a formalization of a of a policy that was kind of not very explicit and people regard it as guidelines and therefore not as rigorous as a as a what a select policy.
No, I, to be clear, I think this is long overdue and I will take the opportunity to to read it carefully and provide comments to Tiger and Linda.
Excellent.
Okay, so with that, I'll we'll defer on further action on that for two weeks. And then financial update, Linda.
Sure. So you have um you have on your tablet the financial update. Uh this is similar to what I presented to you two weeks ago. Um I shared this uh with the Board of Finance. Uh what I've done is I've updated a year-to-date expenditures as of yesterday. Um and I did a continue to do a preliminary update of of year-end forecasting. Um at this point, um as I shared last week, um our series of revenues are trending well. Uh we have our tax collections continue to be um above above budget both current year and prior year. Uh our investment income is performing well. However, we do have a series of other line items, and this is on page two of the document, where some of the other revenues are not um trending as well, largely the result of the um of of COVID. So our parkings, our parking revenues, typically we send out those parking permits in May and that is a cyclical revenue item. We typically get revenues in May, June, and July. That's about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar item. Because there aren't uh people commuting and therefore those May statements are not going to go out. So we are foregoing that May and June revenue that typically closes out the year. So that's almost about a four hundred fifty or so thousand dollar revenue um loss um as a result of not sending those those payments out. Um earlier, we've we had discussions about building permits. I've I've been trending down from the beginning of the year. Um and those are also not going to meet our our budgeted numbers. And therefore, our overall collections is still going to exceed our budget. Um but in historically, in addition to our tax revenues collections being at ninety-nine, in excess of ninety-nine percent from the budget, ninety-eight and a half, we also had, we also hit the mark on these other revenues. So this year, because those other revenues are not hitting the target, the excess collections in taxes is making up for the under collections in revenue. The total impact is still an over collection, but not to the extent that we've seen in prior years. Uh likewise, on the on the expense side, uh we are still going to spend less than what we had budgeted to spend, uh primarily the result of just uh on personnel expenses, uh result of turnover uh and so forth. But then we also have added expenses that we began to include related to COVID. The item that you just approved for Tiger and the barricade, that's an example of those expenses uh that are coming up. Um some of these are known, some of these are unknown. Um and so therefore, we're projecting by year end, we'll have about two hundred and twenty two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so of COVID-related expenses. Uh but all in all, our total revenues are going to exceed our budgeted revenues. Uh total expenditures is going to come slightly below total expenditures. However, that gap difference is not going to be the same as in prior years. When we approve this budget, we approved a budget drawing down three million dollars from the fund balance as we do in every year. In prior years, because of the over collection and the underspend, we make up for that three million dollars. This year, although we're over collecting and underspending, but we're not doing so to the extent to make up a three million dollar swing. And therefore, we anticipate drawing down the fund balance by about a million and a half uh by the end of the year. Which still puts us well within the projections that I shared with you before and we've shared with the Board of Finance. Uh we have a healthy fund balance. Um and as you recall, last week, when the Board of Finance approved the fund balance allocation for the next fiscal year, they took that into account and lowered their fund balance use from the initial five million to four and a half million. But that is to provide us some cushion for the year that follows. Um but from a financial perspective, uh we have sufficient funds um in the account um to meet all of these ongoing expenses. Uh but that's just a a way of giving you some estimates for the end of the year. Um and I'll come back to you again next month. As we get close to the year, the projections, we keep refining them and we'll have a more accurate number. But right now, that's um that's where we're we're looking at. This also takes into account, um even the underspend still takes into account an additional million dollar transfer into our Internal Service Fund. As I've shared with you before, we had for two successive years hadn't transferred the Internal Service um fund for bringing on the library. And therefore, this fiscal year, we're making up, we're making that correction by including that transfer. We're projecting that to do that in the year end, but even with that, uh we're still looking at coming in slightly under our approved budget for the year. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions on this and then there's another item just to add related to the to the mill rate uh that also requires um your signature and I'll share that with you.
So Lana, the uh the COVID expenses, these numbers don't reflect any uh reimbursement from the federal government, right?
No, they don't. Uh right now, we're right now, we're at seventy-five percent reimbursement. Um I think the governor's still working on hopefully getting us to a hundred percent. Uh we will start submitting those items for reimbursement. We'll see those credits in the next fiscal year. We won't see them this fiscal year. But you're right.
Also, 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 you just mentioned the town's COVID expenses. The Board of Ed has separate COVID expenses that we we haven't built into the summary, so.
Sorry, I'm gonna assume that that the the fact that building permit fees, conveyance fees are are way down. I mean, as a lawyer, I can make an argument that that is COVID-related, but I'm I'm assuming that those are probably not reimbursable.
Correct. Uh forgone, I don't believe forgone revenues are, and Tiger, you can correct me on this, um because you've been through this before. They reimburse actual expenses.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to say, well, we we were supposed to get to some amount.
Right. Those are much more, if you look at the numbers on the downturn on the the permits, those numbers are much higher than the the actual expenses, the COVID direct expenses. Uh Linda, on on the commuter parking, right? Can can just walk me through. So people re-up, I think in June um for a year. Um explain to me what's gonna happen now, uh because nobody's commuting.
Right, and and Kevin may speak more, may speak better to this, but typically, the we send out the the statements in May.
Right.
Um and the the period is July one, I believe, is when is when the period begins. But typically, when people get those May statements, they don't wait until July to pay. They start paying them in May and June. And so we get a bulk of that revenue. May and June, we get about seventy percent of that in May and June and thirty percent of it trickles in in July.
What percentage, I'm I'm just talking about commuter. I'm looking at the all-in number for parking permits, but that includes fees and tickets. What percentage is commuter?
Um sure, here, let me go at my detail list here. So of that of that revenue amount, commuter parking is six hundred and forty thousand of that. Yes, of that of that one point three million that's budgeted for parking permits and fees, six hundred and forty of that is permits.
We would expect to get the six forty in May or June, right?
Yes, we get the six forty in July, May, and June. Of that six forty that we budgeted, we got about a hundred and sixty-three thousand in July, just from the prior year. And then for this year, we would get the bulk of that in May, June, and then the balance of that will roll into the next fiscal year. So for this year, we collected the portion that was from the prior year in July. But the May billings, where we would collect May, June, and July, uh we don't anticipate collecting for May and June. Or receiving any revenue for May and June.
Nick, we plan to delay the renewal into into uh August or September and we'll give people credit for March, April, May, and June. So essentially, when they do their renewal, they'll only pay for eight months for next year, but we really haven't determined yet what what the proper date is to go out with their renewal. So the the current permits will continue beyond July first until we send out the renewal.
I think that's great.
That's a big hit.
It is.
Um actually, there's another program, uh Linda, keep in mind that it's not FEMA has a set uh twenty-five percent deductible, but there's another federally funded program called the COVID Relief Fund or something that there's the state has and and we can apply for reimbursement of COVID-related expenses. And most towns are planning to do that with that fund rather than the FEMA program, so. At least the West Coast towns we talked to, so. Any further questions? Any further questions on the financial update?
And then the last item, by way of financial update, as you know, the Board of Finance approved the, set the fund balance and the proposed mill rate. That does come to you for the word of selection and signature, basically the tax, the bill rate that requires your signature, so we'll be sending that to you electronically. But basically, it will be certifying that the mill rate for next year will be 18.164, down from the current 18.240. So the mill rate is going down, and that will come to you for your signature.
When's the last time the mill rate went down?
I'll have to, I'll have, Tom?
Probably with the revale, when the revale went up, so.
I assume so.
I forgot to mention something, and perhaps I, we should have amended the agenda. But you recall, we were going to implement a fee increase or change for the transfer station. As it's turned out, because of COVID, the transfer station, historically, we have people go up to the window at the transfer station to buy their renewal permit. We don't want people to be going up to the window, and we've been working on a process to do this electronically. But we've discovered that the complexity of what we're dealing with, and given the timeframe, I'd like to propose that we can the idea of having the increase go to $75 for those who don't have a hauling contract. The biggest problem here is validating hauling contracts and how we do that electronically. And instead, either keep the $45 fee or increase the $45 fee for everyone to say $50 or $55, which is still a bargain compared to Darien, which is 100, what is the tag, 100? 100 what?
125.
125, on the theory that it's still a bargain, and some seniors, in response to the proposed 75, asked if we could have a senior rate of $60. So I'm not sure we can do that today, or whether we should plan on voting on that in two weeks. In any event, we're not, we want to make the process electronic, where we will email people and say, the fee is X dollars this year. Click here and pay by card, or send us a check. The current permits can stay in effect beyond July 1 for a month if we adopt this process in two weeks. But again, it's given, we don't want people, and actually, there's one other aspect to this that Tiger suggested with the change in having the first 300 pounds free, that if we implemented that, we would require people to come to the window and pay. Tiger's been looking into installing a card reader at the scales, so people don't have to come to the window. But that's not happened yet. That's what you do at your car wash now. You simply swipe your card rather than dealing with a person, giving your card to them. So in the midst of COVID, it's just really almost impossible, it's very difficult, if not impossible, for us to implement these changes. And therefore, I would propose we vote on it again in two weeks with a different fee structure that we can implement in June and July.
I'm okay with that.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Hey Tiger, have we seen a marked uptick in, you know, drop off of waste at the at the transfer station? Because, you know, everybody's home and, yeah, we're working from home, but you also, because you're in New Canaan, you know, hey, I'm going to clean out my garage, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. We're free time.
Volumes and usage of the transfer station have definitely increased over the past two months.
Right.
Okay, anything further on the financial update? Any questions for Lunda?
None here.
No? Okay, we'll move to, the next item on the agenda is 14th appointment of a replacement on the TDAC committee with Susan Switzer, who currently serves on the Conservation Commission. We know Susan, and I think is Tucker still on? Tucker, do you want to, our TDAC chairman?
Yes, many of you may know Sue Switzer. She I had her agenda here, I had her resume sitting here for a long, long time, but she served for many, many years with the Norwalk Tourism Board and the Redevelopment Board over there, I think for 17 years, but has lived in New Canaan, and as Kevin mentioned, serves on the Conservation Commission. Randy Dalia, who's been a member of our TDAC committee since we started, has had to step down. He and his wife are temporarily heading over to, out to, I think it's Denver, to take care of some aging parents. So he had to step down, so we had an opening, and Sue has expressed interest, and I've worked alongside of her at regional level as well as locally, so she would like to join, and we would like to have her.
She's got a great resume.
She does.
And she's a great person.
And she is. I agree on both.
Okay, I move that we appoint Susan Switzer to the Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee. This committee doesn't have terms, but she is replacing someone who resigned.
Yeah, so Randy Dalia stepped down.
Randy, Randy, Randy is going to be moving. So I make that motion to make that appointment, second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, thank you, Susan, for serving, and moving on to legal fees. Thank you, Tucker. Tucker's a full-time part of the town of New Canaan now. We get a lot of mileage.
That is really funny.
We get a lot of mileage out of Tucker.
This is being recorded, right, so I can use this one.
Legal fees. Any questions about legal fees on our tablets? Do we move to approve this?
I just, I moved to approve, but I just have one question, just out of curiosity. What kind of COVID legal expenses do we have?
Well, they've been advising on a lot of these governors' orders and stuff, you know, a number of them have, and what they, I think they sometimes do is they've been giving us memos, such as, we got a memo on the dining, on the, so, you know, someone has to keep track of these, and there's been now, I forget how many governors' orders, and they impact various parts of our town government, so they give us advice and they expect to be paid. I would note that our legal fees are considerably down under budget. We brought the budget down last year by 10% from 350 to, what, 330, and we're bringing it down again for next year's budget, 300. So we're on a, compared to the rest of the budget, we're on a good trend here with legal fees.
Yeah, on the XOs, I mean, I think there's been 35 or 40. I mean, it's.
I think there's, I think there may be 60, 60, I mean, they, well, they've gone through the alphabet, now they're up to JJ or LL.
Yeah, that's it, that's my point. It's just crazy, crazy.
Any further questions? I make a motion that we approve the legal fees on the tablets?
Second here.
Discussion, my favor, aye? That's unanimous, Tom? General Matters, I'm sorry, number 17, we added to the agenda. What is that item?
Backstop work at the Mead Park, large Mead Park Field.
Go ahead, John? I'm sorry, who's talking? We're not hearing John. We have technical difficulty with somebody's mic.
Tiger, can you do it?
Yeah, I can do it. John's breaking up.
We have, we have item 18 as well as item 17?
No, we did 18 already.
You moved 18 in. This is basically we're looking at, we're looking at some work at a large baseball field at Mead need to redo the backstop and some of the fencing in that area. We're, so we're asking, reached out to Richter and Seegan, asked them to give us a design to help us with layout of that area, layout of the, of the the backstop itself and the fencing to try to protect and prevent balls from leaving the playing surface or the playing field. They came back with a, excuse me, a proposal for $5,855. We added a small contingency to it for a total project of $6,735. The money is available inside that budget line item for the fencing replacement in and around this large baseball field. It's been a problem for a very long time with the, with the layout of this backstop. And going forward, we'd like to, some help in getting the design correct and approve.
Did we discuss this in the budget?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, yes, not in, not in this year's budget and previous year's budget. But we did, this is, this is in monies that's currently around. It's not monies that we're getting.
Right. And what do we, what do we think the spend is going to be to actually implement the design?
I think it was $80,000 off the top of my head, sorry.
I think that's right, 80. It's in the memo.
In the memo, I just can't, I can't, I can't, Tom took over my screen. I can't get the memo back up again, so. That's okay.
It's 80.
Tiger, which direction are the balls going that the backstop isn't helping?
The parking lot to the side.
Okay, it's the cars.
We're worried about the cars, yeah. We're not worried about losing them into the water, you know, or a long shot into, into the farthest parking lot. Somebody hits one of those, they got to be happy. It's just the parking lot and safety for walkers and people, you know, people watching the game or their cars, and you know, or just a spectator, or somebody's fishing, right? Walk into somebody who's fishing.
How many cars slash people slash fishermen have been hit on a given, in a given year?
I don't know how many we have off the top of my head, but over time, it's been quite a few. And if you look at the design a bit, you know, the, not a great design, the existing design that we have is not, is not adequate.
Yeah, we have to get that fixed.
For the questions? I move or approve a request from Parks Department to enter into a contract with Richter and Seegan for total $67.35, which includes a subsidy for design services for the fence and backstop replacement at Mead Park Baseball. What is the expected cost of this project to be?
We have $80,000 in the budget for all, all the work.
Okay, second?
Second here.
Discussion? That's unanimous, Tom. That moves us to our General Matters, update and discussion of various town matters. Anything we want to discuss?
I would, I would actually just like to say how proud I am of the whole town and its response to COVID. And for the work you're doing, Kevin.
Thank you, Kit, thank you, I appreciate that.
It's been, it's, it's really been delightful to see the way the towns come together. As I mentioned earlier, I think it's just our citizens, our officials in town, Health Department, Fire, PD. I mean, it's, it's just been all around. A horrible experience, but made so much better by the hard work, dedication, and courage of our citizens.
And the humanity.
Right. So Kev, I assume this is our last Zoom call for a while, hopefully?
What do you mean?
Isn't.
I've got six more Zoom calls today.
No, I meant for, for the selectmen.
Well, we.
Isn't Angle having town council meetings now? In person?
Oh, oh, no, 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 no.
Somebody, that's misinformation. Somebody told me that.
No, actually, you're right, though, in terms of the governor's order. I mean, technically, we could have groups of less than five meet in town hall, but we're not going to, I mean, so technically, we could sit in a room separated, but I didn't think, first of all, as we've noted, we're not going to reopen town halls until sometime in the middle of June. And we haven't worked out the return to work policy. We are having a number of employees return to the office, so we have coverage. And we will gradually work into reopening, allowing visitors and residents to come into town hall. We discovered virtually everything you need to do can be done, phone and email and online. And now that we, when we get the test results back, I think we'll give people the confidence that there's no real concern about the environment here. But we will, we'll get a plan in place and we'll execute on it, but I didn't contemplate we would plan in-person meetings, and the town council, as a body of 12, be kind of hard for them to spread out in the, in the meeting room.
Yeah, I mean, I was surprised when I heard that from someone, obviously misinformation, but it would be easier for us if we wanted to, but I don't care one way or the other.
I hadn't thought about it, and I'd be happy to talk about it for the next, next meeting, if that's what people are inclined to do.
Our original plan had it where the meeting rooms were closed for a little while due to the fact that we couldn't, one, you can't have a large space, and then two, it's difficult to clean. We'd have to remove chairs, do a whole bunch of reconfiguring for both the boardroom and the large meeting room. So at present, we just felt it would be easier to keep them closed.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably more of a messaging issue than anything else. It's something we might want to discuss.
Fair point. Anything else?
I just want to say that actually, I think the Zoom meetings are working, and caution is the better part of valor, as they say.
No, I think they do too. I mean, you know, I think we're going forward, we're going to find that people may, especially the staff, rather than having staff come in for an eight o'clock, seven o'clock meeting at night, they can be in by electronically. So I think we'll figure that out to make it easier for people to attend remotely. Maybe we have to amend our rules, Tom, going forward for, right now, we're operating under governor's orders. It suspends a lot of local rules and FOIA requirements as far as public access, but it's been working rather well.
And I do notice Tiger is smiling, so that means something.
I have a very short commute, Tom. It's actually quite nice.
Anyway, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and wish you all a happy Memorial Day weekend. We're going to have a, we taped our memorial ceremony last Saturday. We'll broadcast it Monday morning. And unfortunately, we won't have our traditional Memorial Day parade this weekend, which would have been hard to believe we're going to break that tradition. But anyway, stay safe, and we'll see you on Zoom soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone.